Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the College of Law for today's Constitution Day event. September 17th marks an important but perhaps underappreciated date in American history. Today, in 1787, after months of debate, negotiation, and compromise, the delegates to the Philadelphia Convention signed the proposed Constitution, adjourned, and sent their work to the states, hoping for its ratification. Those hopes were fulfilled when the ninth state, New Hampshire, officially accepted the Constitution on June 21st, 1788. To commemorate this pivotal moment in American history, Congress in 2004 designated September 17th as Constitution Day. Now, rather than giving us all a day off, Congress coupled recognition of this date with an obligation. Educational institutions that receive federal funding must hold an educational program observing the day. And so, every year, the College of Law hosts a themed event for the benefit of the university community. That said, this year is special. This year is the 70th anniversary of Brown v. Board of Education, the landmark 1954 Supreme Court decision holding that racial segregation in public schools is unconstitutional. With the leadership of and generous support from the Office of the Chancellor, multiple units around our campus are sponsoring events as part of a series on the Brown decision, its impact on American society, and on the challenges that remain in ensuring equal access to a quality education for all of the nation's students. As today's event is part of a series, I do hope that you will attend the campus's other events in the coming year commemorating Brown's 70th anniversary. The Constitution that emerged from the convention in 1787 and was ratified by the states is not the same Constitution that we have today. Knowing that they did not have perfect visibility into the future, the people who wrote and ratified the original Constitution wisely included a mechanism for its amendment. In 1868, after the Civil War, the Fourteenth Amendment was added to the document. It makes all persons born in the United States citizens of the United States, overturning the Supreme Court's decision in Dred Scott v. Sanford. The Fourteenth Amendment also includes a prohibition on states denying to any person the equal protection of the laws. This was a transformative amendment, and it's the basis for the Supreme Court's decision in Brown as well as a series of other cases challenging various forms of discrimination. To help us better understand and appreciate Brown and its legacy, it is my honor to welcome today's speaker, Professor Brett Gadsden. Professor Gadsden is a professor of history at Northwestern University and a leading scholar on the events that led up to the Brown decision and to the challenges to school integration that came after the decision. The title of his address is "The Miracle of Brown." Professor Gadsden, we're truly delighted that you're visiting us here in Urbana-Champaign, and it is my honor to welcome you. Thank you for coming. (APPLAUSE) I still have a few more remarks. I have to, I gotta welcome others, too. My College of Law colleague, Professor Jason Matsoni, who worked quite diligently to make today's event possible, will offer some brief comments after Professor Gadsden's lecture and will save time at the end for questions from all of you. Before yielding the podium, I'd like to thank the Chancellor, Assistant Chancellor Dr. Rod Wyatt, who is deftly overseeing all of the campus's Brown programming this year, and Associate Chancellor Robin Kahler, who has provided invaluable support in planning today's event. I also want to acknowledge special guests who are joining us today. Our Provost and Executive Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, Dr. John Coleman; deans, I assume there are some deans here, my counterparts, who have been able to carve out time in their schedules to come and join us today; and of course, the other members of the Chancellor's Brown v. Board of Education Planning Committee. Thank you very much for coming. And so, without further ado, please join me in welcoming to the podium Professor Brett Gadsden.
My apologies for jumping up and trying to rush the podium. I've been thinking about this talk for a long time and very excited and honored to share a few thoughts with you. Just a quick note of thanks to Jason and Eric and Penny for the wonderful welcome last night. It was a great dinner with colleagues, and it was a fantastic opportunity to think about the kind of differences and similarities that exist between those of us in colleges of arts and sciences or liberal arts and the work that y'all do here at law school. And so, part of me feels a bit like an interloper, kind of standing before this esteemed crowd of attorneys and future attorneys. So I just beg a little bit of forgiveness and a little bit of kindness for, in your Q&amp;A, to what I hope is a thoughtful contribution to a broader conversation about Brown versus Board of Education, the U.S. Constitution, notions of citizenship, and race relations in the United States. I'm gonna put my reading glasses on, so I can read what I've written. "I wrote my first book, Between North and South, in the shadow of the 50th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. It was an attempt to recover the history of my home state and the intersection of a state history with national historical currents. I also discovered an opportunity to chart the intersection of a largely untold story that intersected with my personal history. I was in elementary school when the U.S. District Court demanded one of the most expansive desegregation plans in the nation's history. I thought I had discovered a great success story. During my research, I was confronted with a score of popular memories from both Black and white witnesses about a range of events and the legacy of the decision. Much to my surprise, the African-Americans with whom I talked framed the decision in derisive terms. White public officials, the arguments went, effectively transferred the burdens of reform onto them. School desegregation caused Black communities cherished educational resources. Black administrators and teachers were demoted or fired in the long process of consolidating white and Black school systems. Black students were then subject to terrible forms of racist treatment from principals, teachers, and students in schools where they were now decidedly minority and vulnerable members of the community. The Civil Rights Revolution, I heard time and again, had somehow failed them. Buoyed by a rash of public commemorations, my white interlocutors celebrated a long history of school desegregation. Reforms were construed as collaborative efforts. Whites and Blacks came together to address widely-recognized evils. The Great Strides Forward marked residents' long trek to something akin to a multiracial democracy. Our home state, I heard, was at the vanguard of states struggling to rectify the wrongs of the past. As I continued to work through the archival records, I discovered a clash between memory and history. For all the tales of woe about the legacy of school desegregation, the story I discovered was marked by a series of historic legal victories. And finally, when afforded the opportunity, African-American parents then sent their children to schools previously denied them to take advantage of educational resources, long-denied Black citizens in the state. As a result of decades of activism, Delaware emerged as one of the most desegregated states in the nation by the end of the 20th century. White Delawareans, I discerned in my journey through the archives, were, to say the least, far less enthusiastic about the changes demanded of them. State officials had written segregated schooling into the state's constitution in 1898. White state officials at the behest of the white public repeatedly rebuffed the modest requests from African-Americans for the recognitions of their rights and access to public resources made readily available to the white citizenry. White opposition did not rise to the violent levels that marked other communities. This did not negate, however, the asymmetry between forces organized on opposite sides of the color line. The state and the white majority were aligned thus against a Black marginal minority. Many years later, just beyond the 70th anniversary of Brown, I reread my work through the lens of this conflict between history and memory and the gap between the principles that Americans purport to subscribe and the material realities of the world. I also developed a more historically-inflected empathy for those reflections that Black residents shared in my travels about the state. And what strikes me now in my readings of the historiography of Black freedom struggles broadly and the survey of contemporary reform movements is the extent to which segregation and desegregation, as analytical categories of analysis, have either lost favor or been subordinated in our collective logic and lexicon. It's with these reflections in mind that I would like to offer a brief history of school desegregation in Delaware as a history that is constitutive to Brown versus Board of Education as a miracle. I don't evoke this term in the literal sense, as a phenomenon attributed to a supernatural force. Of course, Brown was not evidence of divine intervention. Indeed, the story of school desegregation in Brown essentially revolves around struggles between various historical agents. However, in framing Brown as a marvel in figurative terms, we are reminded of the extent to which Jim Crow segregation, buttressed by the Supreme Court's ruling in Plessy versus Ferguson, was the law and customary practice of the land and not just an idiosyncratic figure of the former Confederacy. White Southerners certainly authored the Jim Crow statutes demanding segregated schooling in state laws, but the system, in concert with a host of other domestic policies, also evolved in active collaboration with northern political and economic interests and was perpetuated by nonviolent and violent means that federal authorities self-fit to tolerate. And as struggles over school segregation unfolded across the nation in the post-Brown world, white Northerners as well as Southerners, Democrats and Republicans, and conservatives and liberals did their part to maintain color lines through various delaying and evasive tactics. By figuring Brown as a miracle, we can better appreciate the problem of racial segregation as a normative and pernicious feature of American culture across a wide range of geographic and institutional spaces. We can also figure desegregation as part and parcel of a broader array of structural reforms requisite for the construction of a true multiracial democracy. By figuring Brown as an astonishing fact, we can appreciate the extent to which the recognition of universal citizenship and progress, too often presumed as tautological features of the political, social, and legal past, have always been tenuous and subject to reverse. So why Delaware? Delaware was one of the central proving grounds for the NAACP's campaign against segregation in education, and it is an ideal site for assessing the extent to which a broad constellation of forces opposed each protest to Jim Crow schooling and then reorganized to turn back or minimize the scope of reforms demanded by the courts. The first state to ratify the U.S. Constitution in December 7th, 1778, it was here that Black college students and NAACP attorney Luris Redding challenged the inequalities between historically-Black Delaware State College and the University of Delaware. All the small number of Black plaintiffs wished, at some fundamental level, was access to lines of coursework, like engineering, that had been denied them at their historically-Black institution. Redding won the first case ordering the desegregation of an undergraduate program at a public university. Moreover, two Delaware state cases, they go by the name of Belton versus Gebhart and Beulah versus Gebhart, both initiated by Redding, marked the first time that segregated white primary and secondary schools were ordered to admit Black students. The Beulah case originated after the state refused to provide a bus for Shirley Beulah, an African-American primary school student who simply sought transport to her Black school. And this is a quote: "Since the bus passed their home twice on its daily rounds, her mother, Shirley, informed the director of transportation in her school district, it could pick Shirley up at the house and drop her off at the post office, which was only two blocks from the Black school in their community. 'To take my child to school would not reroute the bus at all,' she asserted. 'Put her off at the post office and pick her up at the post office and bring her right back to my door. The bus is not full, so that isn't an excuse.' This was a too-big ask for school officials." Again, Redding laid bare the stark differences between white and Black schooling in their various physical features. The most glaring disparities between Black and white schooling, there was but a single Black high school for African-American students in the state at the time. The state had also constructed a system of modern schools, primary and secondary schools, for white students across the state, but Black students were largely constrained to small one- and two-bedroom schoolhouses, many of them lacking a range of resources afforded their white peers. The state, for its part, cited a classic states' rights argument. School officials were responsible for overseeing the schools as they saw fit. They denied the record of inequalities, and any inequalities that may have been found through deliberations were easily fixed. The Delaware case was then bundled with Brown versus Board of Education, which was from Kansas; Briggs versus Elliott, which was from South Carolina; Davis versus County Board of Prince Edward County, which was from Virginia; and Bowling versus Sharp, which originated in the District of Columbia, as companion cases upon which the Supreme Court set about reevaluating the merits of Plessy and the constitutionality of segregation in public education. The findings of fact in the Delaware cases and the introduction of evidence suggesting the psychological damage done to Black children as a result of segregation provided Chief Justice Earl Warren with important justifications for his ruling in Brown that segregated schools were inherently unequal. Delaware then experienced one of the first episodes of white reactionary backlash, later characterized as massive resistance, after the Milford Board of Education admitted a small group of Black students to the local white high school in 1954. Bryant Bowles and the National Association for the Advancement of White People quickly exhausted their welcome and were run out of town by the Attorney General. The revolt compelled school officials across the state, however, to cite whites' unpreparedness for change and the possibility of violence as grounds for delaying the implementation of any substantive desegregation plans across the state until Delaware Senior Senator John J. Williams cast the vote that broke the Southern filibuster to the 1964 Civil Rights Bill. This brings us to a moment in the early 1970s when school desegregation proponents moved to leverage Brown's precedent and craft a new and expansive direct attack campaign against a form of segregation that was a vestige of the Jim Crow past and a manifestation of the proliferation of suburbs in post-war America. White residents, both Black and white, were growing increasingly concerned about the changing demographics of the city and its public schools. The largest city and economic capital of the state was experiencing profound demographic changes with the flight of white residents to neighboring suburbs. The trend was accompanied by a veritable exodus of white children from the city's schools, an increase in the absolute number and percentage of Black students, and a steep decline in the white public's perception of the public school system. Reformers then crafted a legal complaint on behalf of a group of Black Wilmingtonans in a self-consciously metropolitan approach to the problem of segregated schooling in the wake of white flight and urban retrenchment. Jeanne and Clifton Lewis joined the suit after Redding visited their home. Their oldest daughter had graduated from P.S. DuPont High School, but they sent their two younger children to mostly-white private schools because they were concerned about the declining academic standards in city schools, and they believed that cross-racial contact was an important element of their children's education. Lilian Richardson, a prominent community activist, agreed to join the suit, citing her concerns about the concentration of Black students and the decline in the quality of public schools. Wilbert Carr had been hesitant to send his children to suburban schools, but believed they were not being academically challenged in the city's schools and agreed to participate in the suit. In a most expansive expression of the NAACP's direct attack strategy, plaintiffs' counsel highlighted the breadth of state-sponsored discriminatory housing and education acts that had the simultaneous effect of restraining Black and expanding white housing choices and fueled racial segregation in metropolitan-area schools. Reformers thus embraced a broader conception of de jure segregation that challenged the sexually-inflected dichotomy between suspect de jure and inoffensive de facto segregation that the civil rights movement had helped to make popular in the Brown decision. Now, in essence, civil rights attorneys claim that no matter the source of school segregation, whether in pupil assignment policies or residential housing patterns, the racial divide, given the state's practice of discriminatory education and housing policies, was de jure in nature. Attorney Louis Lucas, with Redding at his side, now assumed the reins of litigation. The two brought to bear the full weight of a metropolitan strategy in arguments before the court. They were particularly critical of provisions of the 1968 Educational Advancement Act, a school reorganization measure designed to consolidate the state's patchwork of small school districts, which they contended confined Wilmington students to city schools and prevented the state board from executing early court mandates demanding the dismantling of the dual-school system. The EAA, the Educational Advancement Act, was on its face a crowning achievement in the modernization of public education in the state. Progressive educators had embraced school centralization as a part of a modernization effort to transfer authority from neighborhood interests to city-wide school boards and broaden educational opportunities. The problem, as Lucas argued, was that the EAA set coterminous city and school district lines and precluded any redistricting plans that merged sections of Wilmington with suburban districts. It essentially set Wilmington as an overwhelmingly Black district. Lucas also drew attention to the extent to which public officials selectively emphasized the significance of municipal boundaries when devising education policy in a manner that promoted segregation. Plaintiff's attorneys introduced the evidence of several inter-district arrangements between the city and Wilmington and Newcastle County in the late 1960s and early 1970s in which the two municipalities agreed to transfer or share responsibilities for metropolitan-area parks and golf courses, area-wide land use policies, tax assessments, and disposal of solid waste. In contrast, the EAA imbued a new sanctity into Wilmington's municipal boundaries and precluded any subsequent efforts to further school integration between city and suburbs, even as a number of suburban school superintendents testified about longstanding inter-district educational arrangements. Indeed, they testified about the longtime practice of cross-district transfers and area-wide schooling, especially in special education and vocational training in Newcastle County. Furthermore, more than 1,000 white students crossed district boundaries to attend city schools in previous decades when city schools were considered superior to suburban schools. The plaintiffs then expanded their challenge to the de jure de facto binary. Here, Lucas summoned witnesses to speak about the structure of state-sponsored residential segregation in the metropolitan area and its effect on the racial profile of area schools. Witnesses testified to the state's real estate primer, which advised agents to follow the National Association of Real Estate Board's Code of Ethics that counseled, at least informally through the 1950s, against introducing Blacks into white residential areas. They also noted that only 7% of the listed properties in the multiple listing services of the Greater Wilmington Board of Realtors were designated as open and thereby available to prospective minority buyers. The testimony of local Blacks added a human dimension to the historical record, especially as it related to the day-to-day practices of the real estate industry. Today, many of you are probably familiar with this fact that many Black homeowners feel compelled to whitewash their residence and effectively remove all the evidence of their Blackness from their property to secure proper valuations of their homes. Municipal Court Judge Leonard Williams offered an example of this process in reverse in some of the most powerful testimony regarding the challenges that Black homebuyers faced as they sought to purchase property in predominantly-white residential areas. Realtors declined, after discovering he was Black, to show him properties. Homeowners, after personal inquiries, refused to sell, citing their desire not to break the neighborhood. Williams told the court that he had resorted to subterfuge to secure his current home. He'd asked one of his friends, a white lawyer, to inquire about a property in the prestigious Rockford Park area of the city. The friend visited the house and was impressed. Still, Williams, like any wise homebuyer, wished to see the property himself, so he put on some old Army fatigues, mussed his hair a bit, and posed as an electrician's helper, who had been hired by the white lawyer to inspect the house. After deciding to purchase the house, Judge Williams and his friend negotiated the sale of the property and then transferred the deed to Williams and his wife. At the time of the trial in 1973, Williams noted, they were still the only Black family in the neighborhood. In addition, several Black realtors recalled institutionalized forms of housing discrimination and testified about the difficulty that Black clients encountered when they attempted to buy homes in white residential areas. Realtor Ann T. Gurk recalled her difficulties obtaining listings for Black clients in predominantly-white suburbs, and she told the court of incidents of overt hostility from suburban residents when she showed houses to prospective Black buyers. Still, the state stood fast against these charges. Defense counsel argued that public officials had fulfilled their constitutional obligations when they finally dismantled the dual-school system after the 1964 Act and thus eradicated the vestiges of de jure segregated school system. To the extent to which the court might find evidence of segregation in the metropolitan area pupil assignment plans, they essentially argued that such outcomes were purely accidental, the result of non-education-related factors that were beyond their responsibility to address. In a further attempt to exonerate the state, defense counsel also advanced a Black complicity argument. Here, attorneys attempted to conflate African-Americans' generations-long commitment to self-help, community control, and institution building, which constituted a pragmatic politics fashioned to address institutionalized white neglect and racial segregation. Thus, counsel called witnesses who they believed supported the state's argument that any segregation that existed within the system had been produced with the consent of Black public officials. Given their acquiescence to such reforms, counsel continued, "The plaintiff's complaints were offered in hindsight and in light of unfavorable outcomes." The district court found the plaintiff's arguments compelling and ruled in their favor in July 1974, thereby establishing a legal finding of constitutional violation and effectively erasing the legal distinction between intent and outcome in state policy. This was a remarkable development, given that the Supreme Court was deliberating over a similar case in Detroit, Michigan, where days later, it would rule that the U.S. Constitution did not authorize federal courts to order inter-district busing or to reorganize school district lines to remedy racial segregation. In this case, it was called Milliken versus Bradley. Justice, Justice Potter Stewart ruled that the roots of housing segregation that produced a core of racially identifiable black city schools were, quote, "unknown and perhaps unknowable." He continued, "The Constitution simply does not allow federal courts to attempt to change that situation unless and until it is shown that the state has contributed to the cause of, to cause the situation to exist." In an act of willful amnesia and historical and social scientific blindness, Milliken closed the door to desegregation schemes in metropolitan areas across the nation. Still, the local decision, the local Delaware decision sent a shockwave through the community. White suburban school officials, public officials, including a young Senator Joseph Biden, and residents who had generally acquiesced to Brown's mandates, rose up in opposition. This aggrieved majority, opposed school desegregation plans that required the transfer of significant numbers of black students from city schools to suburban schools, and worse, white suburban children from suburban schools to city schools. They expressed their frustration with the court's exercise, alleged exercise of undemocratic power and the judiciary's meddling and affairs best left to majoritarian legislative initiatives. They also filtered their critique through the lens of a rising tax revolt, an ideological component of the process of suburbanization in metropolitan areas. A metropolitan desegregation plan, in the minds of many, promised higher taxes, given the historically low tax rates in the suburbs. They were even more concerned, however, about social disorganization within black communities and the alleged breakdown, breakdown of social relations in the city that undermined the operation, or that it was alleged undermined the operation of Wilmington Public Schools. In an act of, another act of amnesia as to the volume of, of housing segregation presented at the trial, one critic simply contended that if blacks wish, blacks wish to attend suburban schools, they should move out of the city. This was done at one of the kind of, um, public meetings that they held after the court's decision. Nonetheless, the Delaware court stuck to its guns and in March nineteen seventy-five, provided the basic framework in which the community would resolve the problem of city-suburb segregation. The jurists acknowledged, acknowledged the guiding precedent of the high court's decision in Milliken and its pronouncement about the, the relationship between the remedy and constitution violation. Metropolitan segregation in Delaware was a vestige of Delaware's Jim Crow pasted, Jim Crow, Delaware's Jim Crow pasted ruled. And in contrast to the Milliken case, acknowledged history, the wealth of social science data provided the court, and the broad scope of discriminatory actions in state-sponsored education and housing policies that shaped the racial demographics of the metropolitan area of housing and pupil assignment patterns in its determination of liability. "The outmigration of white residents from the city and the increase in the number of black residents in the previous two, previous two decades," the court concluded, quote, "resulted not exclusively from individual residential choice and economics, but also from assistance, encouragement, and authorization by government policies." Among the courts, among the violations, the court cited the nineteen thirty-eight Federal Housing Association Mortgage Underwriting Manual that had promoted racially and economically homogeneous neighborhoods. Restricted covenants continued to be recorded in New, Newcastle County deeds until nineteen seventy-three. The court cited statistics gathered by the State Human Relations Commission in which fifty-one percent of this, of, of the city, but only seven percent of the suburban listings were, housing listings were open. And the New York, and the Newcastle County Housing Authority, under pressure from suburban neighborhood groups, focused construction of public housing in the, almost entirely in the city of Wilmington, in effect concentrating poor and minority families there. The court also found evidence that the state had subsidized, actually subsidized, interdistrict transportation of white students to private and parochial schools. In contrast to the Delaware case where the high court de-linked housing and school policy, embraced a notion of fragmented metropolitan space and essentially let suburban school districts off the hook, the Delaware judge concluded that, quote, "de jure segregation in Newcastle County was a cooperative venture involving both city and suburbs." Then the court turns its attention to the Educational Advancement Act. The act, the, the jurist acknowledged, was racially neutral on its face. The process of school reorganization was not purposefully discriminatory, but in light of recent rulings in which the court had recognized the educational value of reducing racial isolation, the E A A denied the state board the opportunity to consider and potentially address the impact of the measure on levels of racial isolation in area schools. Quote, "To the extent that racial characteristics was effectively excluded from the list of legitimate educational criteria for reorganization," the court deduced. "The exclusion of Wilmington from the board's power under the Educational Advancement Act constitutes a suspect racial classification." The Delaware court had discovered, as Louis Reading informed his colleagues at the Legal Defense Fund in New York, quote, "the other side of the Milliken coin." But for Milliken, here lay a replicable model for attending to the historical record and the spirit of Brown beyond the Jim Crow error. White opposition proved inadequate to thwart this metropolitan remedy, which was launched in nineteen seventy-eight, but white officials ensured that the burdens of the reform were heaped on the ostensible victors of the case. City schools, and most significantly Wilmington High School, was closed to advance the court's mandate. Black administrators and teachers were again subject to transfers and uncertainty to fulfill the court's demands. Black students would spend the preponderance of their school years bussed to suburban schools. Predominantly white suburban students would only be expected to travel three of their twelve years into the city. Opponents of metropolitan, of the metropolitan remedy only had to wait until nineteen ninety-five, when Judge Sue Robinson ruled that the state had lived up to its obligation to desegregate metropolitan area schools. Quote, "The doors of the public school system have been open to all children regardless of race," the court concluded. And then, and the judge had, had kind of effectively remedied, or the courts had effectively remedied or removed itself from, as an, as an agent of reform in the history of school desegregation in the state. The Delaware General Assembly then set about developing neighborhood school plans for the metropolitan area and subjecting pupil demographics to high levels of residential segregation that marked the area. This is a quote from a legal scholar, um, familiar with the situation in Delaware, man by the name of legal, Leland Ware. And, and Leland makes the argument that ninety percent of the city's public school systems were African-American or Latino by the end of the twentieth century, three-quarters of them eligible for free lunch programs. This isolation, this isolation of these students thus set the precondition for resegregation in metropolitan areas by race and class. So I'll just wrap up right now. In the long struggle against segregation, Delaware proved emblematic of what I contend as an endemic feature of U.S. history. Here, we can discern the extent to which progress relied almost solely on the efforts of an aggrieved minority and sympathetic jurists. We can also see something about the democratic order of opposition in American race relations, especially those rooted in the actions of executive and legislative agencies, who did more to thwart change than advance it. At each turn, often buttressed by intense white grassroots pressure, state executives and school administrators rebuffed or implemented reforms that were half-hearted or cynical in nature. They thus ensured that the court's rulings never fundamentally disrupted the fact of racial segregation in public schools. So what does this pretend for the future? The trends, as the U.S. C.L.A. Civil Rights Project summarized last April, don't look promising. Intense segregation coupled with the problem of high poverty has tripled in the last thirty years. Latino discrimination has been delayed or weakened. Metropolitan desegregation plans blocked. Segregation in southern states has been on the rise since nineteen ninety. Central school, central city schools are the most segregated in the nation. And even charter schools are more segregated than more traditional public schools. I could go on here, and they, they have a, a report there that's really worth reading if you're interested. Particularly troubling, liberals have focused their reform efforts elsewhere. Four years ago, in a memorable, memorable debate, Senator Kamala Harris criticized Vice President Joe Biden for his past opposition to the nineteen seventies Wilmington metropolitan busing remedy. Biden had championed several federal legislative measures designed to limit the power of federal authorities to impose busing plans where there was evidence of school segregation. The controversy waned, however, after Harris was compelled to admit her own opposition to remedies that produced the kinds of change realized in Wilmington in the nineteen seventies. Now, nowhere in either of the party's platforms is desegregation mentioned as part of the suite of measures designed to improve the quality of public schooling offered to students and is not beyond the realm of imagination to think that the Supreme Court's conservative majority would take a swipe at the historic decision if given the chance. In his recent approval of congressional maps that critics claimed discriminated against black voters just last May, Justice Clarence Thomas wrote that Brown commenced a period of, quote, "extravagant uses of judicial power," unquote. So how not to regard Brown and the reforms it has ushered as a miracle against the backdrop of this nation's long history of segregation. The court's demands to dismantle the structures of racial segregation and discrimination stand out as exceptional, not normative features of American history. Change has unfolded despite, not because, of the wishes of the popular majority and the institutions most beholden to it. And so I wonder, as we look forward to the seventy-fifth anniversary or even the centennial of Brown versus Board of Education, what we will see, whether Brown will be a kind of vestige of a kind of long-lost past or will be something to which we can look around and think and regard as something to which we have collectively lived up to. Thank you.
Happy Constitution Day. So, so many rich things came out of the lecture, and I just want to spend maybe just a few minutes, um, offering some reflections before we open things up to questions from the, the audience. First, I'm just so pleased that Professor Gadsden is able to join us today. I had read the, the book that he mentioned, Between North and South, about a decade ago. It's a particularly valuable book because of its focus on Delaware. Delaware is partly northern, partly southern. And that's an important aspect of the Delaware experience with lots of implications for the rest of the, the country. If you're sitting there feeling smug before, because you're from Illinois, Illinois is also partly northern and partly southern. The southern part of Illinois is the south, right? Just right across from the former capital of the Confederacy. When I say that, maybe I, I should also add, there's an epigraph in Professor Gadsden's book, a statement from Malcolm X, "If you are south of the Canadian border, you are south." When I was reading the book a decade ago, I thought the author, in addition to being a highly skilled historian, must have a law degree. Because the book reflects a very sophisticated understanding of how cases come about, how factual records are developed, about litigation choices and strategies, about how you turn unfairness of the kinds that Brett described into a legal claim, about the things that courts can do and the things that they cannot do, and about the work that lies ahead even after you secure a favorable outcome in, in litigation. I don't want to offend anyone, but most historians don't understand these things. And that's unfortunate because it reduces the level of engagement that can occur between legal professionals and history professionals. But Brett's book is the exception and, and the model because he does understand the dynamics of the legal system and in a way that adds real heft and significance to the book. It turns out, he didn't actually go to law school, so that makes this all the more impressive. It's not too late. I can take you off to the admissions office right after the event. When I, when I read, reread the book over the weekend for today's event, the thing I kept thinking was that seventy years is actually not a very long time. And we are not very far from history, in a sense. And so the book actually opens with young Senator Joseph Biden in nineteen seventy-four, under attack from Delaware voters who are unhappy with some of the interventionist activities of the court, and particularly unhappy with, with busing as a remedy. Biden, elected to the Senate in nineteen seventy-two, had run on a very strong civil rights platform, but under pressure from his constituents, he ends up proposing in nineteen seventy-five an anti-busing amendment to the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act. His proposal fails, but he signs on to an alternative that is proposed by Senator Burt. And of course, you know, the reason I say history is never far behind us, this does of course come up in the Democratic primary debates in twenty nineteen. But the Biden busing incident, as Professor Gadsden recounts it in the book, captures, I think, many of the complications of understanding, but also implementing Brown. So in the course of defending his position as a remedy in the nineteen seventies, Biden, a lawyer, articulates and sticks to some distinctions so between de jure segregation and de facto segregation, segregation by law versus segregation that just happens to occur for other reasons, between segregation and separation, between desegregation and integration, between federal intervention versus state and local control of schooling, between the role of courts versus the role of the political process, between state action versus private choices, between government intervention versus parental choices. These are all very lawyerly distinctions, and they have effects on the historical trajectory of the litigation in Delaware and ultimately in Brown and afterwards. And so then, on, on the same theme, let me just make a broader point. Brown is, Brown is a decision in some ways for, for everyone. And that's because there are different ways to read and understand the logic of what the court did, and therefore the meaning of the decision, apart from its invalidation of racial segregation by, by law of public schools. So like most miracles, Brown is a bit mysterious. There are very different understandings of Brown that you will hear, you will hear today. And these make a difference. So it's invoked by progressives who support a reading of the Constitution as a living document and allows the government to take active steps to correct inequalities, and particularly racial inequalities. It's invoked by conservatives who favor an approach to constitutional interpretation in which the words mean what they meant to the public at the time of ratification and who conclude that government may not act on the basis of or with consideration of race. And so most recently, in cases of significance to all of us, in the Students' Referees Admissions Decision, the affirmative action case from last year, the majority opinion, holding that consideration of race in admissions violates equal protection clause of the fourteenth amendment, relies heavily on Brown. It reads Brown as barring any use of race in school assignments, outside of the narrow context of ending, back to the sort of Joe Biden distinction, ending unconstitutional racial segregation by law. Brown imposes, according to this approach, a colorblindness requirement. The dissent in the same case also relies on Brown. Its first paragraph reads, "The equal protection clause of the fourteenth amendment enshrines a guarantee of racial equality. The court long ago concluded that this guarantee can be enforced through race-conscious means in a society that is not and has never been colorblind," citing Brown versus Board of Education. So Brown in the name of equality prohibits considering race as part of an affirmative action plan. Brown permits it in the name of equality. And, you know, there are various explanations why this might be the, the, the case. If you go back to the Brown decision itself, it is, it's, it's remarkable, this is it. You know, I don't have to, you know, it's remarkably short. It's less than six pages. It's very short for a Supreme Court decision. It has a clear bottom line. It's an opinion then for the logic, in the sense that it says these states and then in bowling District of Columbia operating racially segregated public schools, and these violate the equal protection clause, but the logic of the decision is a bit murky. And in part because the question in Brown is not just whether schools can be racially segregated, it's whether there can be racial segregation if the racially segregated schools are equal in terms of all of their tangible aspects, so classroom size, and quality of the teachers, and quality of the instruction, and size of the library, and so on, right? Those are the facts that are assumed in Brown, and whether the schools ever were equal in those respects is a different question. But the issue in Brown is if they are equal in all of those tangible respects, can they be racially segregated? Can you have separate but equal racial, public schools under the provision of the Fourteenth Amendment? The court says no, but, but why? One reading of Brown is that the education being delivered is not the same, because there is an effect upon black children when they are segregated, when the state sends a message that you're not fit to attend school with white children. This has an impact on self-esteem, and learning, and, and identity, and achievement, and life prospects, and so on. Segregation does not have this effect on, on white kids. And the court cites some social science evidence about the psychological impact of segregation on black children. If that's your reading of Brown, then the government cannot use race in this way, because it's imposing an injury and doing so unequally on a particular racial group. But the psychological harm reading of Brown has some problems. If you're following the social science, then are you really reaching a constitutional decision, and what happens if the social science evidence changes? And so a different reading of Brown is that we don't have to trace things to specific injury that is experienced, but that the problem is at the outset, that the mere classification by the government on the basis of race itself violates the Constitution. The government has no reason to be treating people differently based on their race. And so in Brown, although there was this evidence about psychological harm, it wasn't really the basis for the, the ruling, that school assignments based on race does violate equal protection. Yet if that's your reading of Brown, you might find equally problematic other uses of race, including as a factor in university admissions, in the case that I mentioned a moment ago. And there are other readings of Brown as well. When Brown is decided, a lot of people, and I mean people who oppose segregation, liberal law professors, right, on the far left, are scratching their heads and saying, well, we love this, but we don't understand the logic of the court's decision. How do we explain the miracle that has occurred? Brown has actually argued twice. After the first argument in December of 1952, there are, we later learn from the justices' papers, only four justices who had concluded that segregated schools violate the Constitution. It takes another round of argument, perhaps a miraculous death of one of the justices, and the arrival of Chief Justice Warren to get the unanimous decision. And that helps you understand perhaps why the opinion in the cases is a bit light on details, it has to be written not to satisfy all nine. So we look elsewhere to understand Brown, and how it came about, and what happens later, and we're still doing that seventy years after the case. I suspect we'll still be doing it when you, when we have you back thirty years from now for the hundredth anniversary, but we're doing it better because of the rich contributions that Brett Gadsden has made and continues to make. So I very much appreciate your presence and, and your wonderful talk, and invite the audience questions if you're willing to take them.
So anyone who would like to ask a question, don't be bashful. Please come up.
Oh, come on, come on. Now it's on? All right, so seems like going forward, there's no chance of the law as being a remedy to fix de jure segregation, or in effect segregation? So what other avenues do you propose, seeing as, you know, law isn't your field of study? And I suspect that you're probably better off for it, because there's nothing we can do to remedy it.
I don't know. I mean, I, this is where I play my historian card. I look back, I do not look forward. I mean, I, and I, but I find it really, really troubling. As kind of a matter of public policy, as a matter of education policy, I'm kind of at a loss for productive recommendations. I mean, I think on some basic level, what we need is a, a kind of reproduction of the kind of social movement work that was done in the 1950s and 1960s, that compelled, that helped to produce Brown and Civil Rights Act and Voting Rights Act in the first place, short of, I don't know how that would look. It would obviously look different today, or in a week, or in a year than it would look fifty years ago, but I think that that's kind of what needs to happen. But I, I think that just the historian in me, I think, kind of what, and I'm not constrained by, you know, the, the kind of logic of the law and, and, and legal procedure and custom, but I, I, you know, I think what's rather striking to me as I read the history is just the extent to which it demands a rethinking about the essential quality of race relations, and the relationships between black people and white people in America. And that has always been a fraught relationship, it has always been an unequal relationship, and is always a relationship positive on white Americans as the superior, in the superior position, and African-Americans in the subordinated position. I think the, if there's a great kind of failing of Brown in the, in the Warren Court's decision, as, again, as a historian, it's the fact that the Supreme Court never really came to grips with the nature of Jim Crow, which is by definition a system designed to subordinate African-Americans, to render them as second-class citizens in the polity, in the kind of economic order of the South. That's the way, that's why it was invented, that's why it was enforced so vigorously and oftentimes violently. And I do not believe that, that logic post-64 Act, post-65 Voting Rights Act is fundamentally disrupted, that where you have segregation, or where you have separation, you have inequality. And that does not mean that, I mean, that's not to negate the kind of long history of African-American institution building, and, and traditions of self-help and all that kind of stuff, but I think that that's never been sufficient to overcome, to over, over take, or to negate the, the kind of, the kind of power of Jim Crow to, that, to structure our society in the late 1890s, in the 1990s, or today.
Thank you again for being here. I found the point that you made pretty early on compelling about how the effects of Brown were seen sort of most strongly in the black community, and with black teachers being fired, and those sorts of things. And I feel that that's sort of a trend that we can see with a lot of things. What came to mind for me was climate change and environmental racism. I'm wondering about any ideas or thoughts that you have about how we can try to legally prevent that from happening when we make decisions? And maybe a better question for you as a historian is, are there historical examples of people sort of protecting against the trend where the most marginalized individuals are impacted?
Oh, gosh.
Sorry.
Wow. I think, you know, again, I, I think, look, I, I think something really brilliant happened in the post-World War II, in the decades following post-World War II, right, after World War II, right, with this kind of organization of the civil rights movement. I think that they affected a really dramatic change in society. I know, I don't believe I'm standing here before you, right, but for the accomplishments of civil rights activists across the country. I think we probably need something, a kind of reproduction of that in the contemporary moment or in the near future. I, I, one of the things that I think historians have only begun to kind of tap into, I mean, we're still, my tribe, we're still trying to, we're still, I think, just beginning to come to grips with the 1970s and the 1980s and the 1990s, like the dust hasn't quite settled on those periods yet, much less the 21st century. But I think one of the, I think, really interesting problems that emerges, I think, in this, in the post-civil rights movement era is the problem of demobilization, right? That there's, there wasn't in the 70, in the last decades of the 20th century, in the early, in the early decades of the 21st century, the same kind of, kind of organized social movement structures that existed, existed, a kind of after World War II. They exist today, but in different forms, and then they're organized around kind of different organizing imperatives, and, and certainly rooted in different technologies. But I think that, I think there's still big, I mean, I think the jury's out on the efficacy of like the, of more recent social movements, particularly around Me Too and Black Lives Matters, in terms of like creating the foundation for a reversal of things, or the, the kind of institutionalization of a, a kind of new reformist regime. So, yeah, I, I don't quite know. I mean, I think, I, I think the one thing that I, I hope is, is not lost is, in, in the world, I know it's kind of a pessimistic assessment or pessimistic reading of American history. And, and, and my historian colleagues and I, we're, we're kind of fussing, and a lot, we do a lot of fussing about many of our students who have kind of seemingly drunk very deeply from the well of Afro-pessimism and that kind of, that kind of new theory that seems to be kind of really pervasive, especially in my scholarly circles. I think that's, I think scholars who subscribe to that, those theories are, offer interesting challenges, but I think that there's also a way to read social movement history as essentially optimistic, right? That, 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 that folks on the ground have always believed in the possibility of changing their world for the better, all right? And that's why people get up and they go into the streets, and they go into courtrooms, and they devise all kinds of really ingenious means where which to affect change, right? How that looks, I'm not exactly sure in the future, but I'm, I have to be, to get out of bed in the morning, optimistic that that, you know, something will reveal itself at some point in the future.
Well, I guess it's my responsibility to take a look at the clock. I would like to thank Professor Gadsden, thank Professor Metzoni, this was wonderful.
Thank you very much.
And I suspect everybody in the room did too. If we would please thank our scholars.
Right, thank you very much.